As the board voted to have the Vancouver Aquarium present a 15-minute presentation, we'll now have the Vancouver Aquarium please come up. And please state your name before speaking. Thank you very much. Please state your name and your association you're associated with before speaking.
See if we can get the deck to come up.
Just bear with us for a second.
I'm John Nengel. I'm president and CEO of the Vancouver Aquarium Marine Science Center, and thank you for the opportunity to lay out our case. On the screen, you see a very quick snapshot of some pieces of the 2016 year at a glance. As it notes, we saw 1.18 million visitors in the aquarium, approaching 100,000 schoolchildren, and a growing digital audience globally of about 58 million people last year. Now, will that start itself, or do you? It's a video. Quick. There we go. Okay.
Here, in Canada's Arctic, the ocean air fills with the hauntingly beautiful sound of beluga whales. Their songs have long earned them the nickname "Canaries of the Sea." But until recently, little was actually known about the purpose of their chirps, squeaks, and whistles. All that changed as a result of the research done at the Vancouver Aquarium Marine Science Center.
I'm a field biologist. I really enjoy understanding what animals are all about, especially when we're talking about their communication system.
After years of dedicated research, Dr. Vergara was able to classify 28 call types. She discovered that mothers and calves develop distinct calls to establish and maintain contact with each other.
Belugas are incredibly acoustic animals. They rely on sound to survive.
Dr. Vergara now uses the data she gathered from the belugas at the aquarium to help her catalog and understand the calls she records from belugas in Canada's Arctic. The Arctic is warming at twice the rate of any other region in the world, and the loss of sea ice is opening the Arctic to increased shipping traffic and oil exploration. Since belugas depend on sound to communicate and navigate, any interference by noise pollution could affect their well-being, including their ability to keep track and take care of their young. Thanks to Dr. Vergara's ongoing work in the field and her years of research at the Vancouver Aquarium, we can equip scientists, Arctic communities, and policymakers with better information to protect the thousands of wild belugas that are caught in the grip of a changing Arctic.
Thank you. So if we can return to the deck, please. There we go. So that's just a brief overview of one of the roles that beluga whales have played at the Vancouver Aquarium in the past few years. So as the slide says, none of this is about capture from the wild. Anything you hear to that effect is baloney. So in 1996, we brought forward a promise to not ever collect cetaceans from the wild. We haven't, and we won't. And we agreed with the park board to put that into both our lease agreement and the bylaw. The beluga whales currently living in aquariums around North America are going to stay there. They cannot go back to the wild. You will hear, I suspect, proposals for things like marine sanctuaries. There isn't one, and there is unlikely to ever be one in Canada for a lot of reasons that we can go into later on if you're curious. So the whales living in aquariums are going to stay there. And they're either going to live in those aquariums, or they're going to live with us as per our proposal. And we're pretty widely recognized as having exceptional beluga care. Community members, I've also heard the charge that the aquarium isn't attached to the community or isn't a creature of the community. Well, 1.18 million community members. So if you do the math in terms of how many are locals, and I can't tell you exactly the breakout between the region and the city proper, but somewhere north of 840,000 of those people come from our locals. They're not tourists. 28,000-member households is at an all-time high. Both those numbers are records for the third year in a row. So people are voting with their feet. They're coming to the aquarium, they're participating in membership, they're participating in programs. As a tenant, as the graphic says, we contribute nearly $1 million to the park board and to the city without receiving any financial support from the city in any way for our operations. The plan that we've put forward includes a multimillion-dollar revitalization to badly aging infrastructure. 50-year-old concrete with steel in it soaked in seawater needs to be replaced. And we simply have no choice. We're facing the end of structural life of some of our facilities. The aquarium, this is slightly out of order. We operate the only marine mammal rescue center in the country. Annually, we see and rescue more than 100 marine mammals a year. And the goal is always to put every one of them back into the wild. There are times when that can't happen, and you'll hear from Marty Helena in a moment about some of those circumstances. And in that case, they often come to our facility or other facilities to live out the rest of their lives. Removal from or return to nature of any marine animal, fish, invertebrate, marine mammal, doesn't matter, is under the control of the Department of Fisheries and Oceans and has to be authorized and permitted. So it isn't our choice in terms of what happens to animals. So our proposal and our commitment that we made on the 20th was to, having heard from all of you, it was to maintain a non-breeding whale, beluga whale population in a new display with a significantly expanded commitment to research using something we call a "research first" protocol, which is pretty much a first anywhere, which would be to move all of our interpretation and display activities, presentation activities, to interpreting the research that's going on so that we actually accomplish two things. We connect people to what's happening in nature and the questions there. That's what begets the research we do, because by policy, all of the research at the aquarium has to have a conservation question at its core. And of course, when you say the word "research," I can imagine that different things pop up in your head, different mental pictures of people in white lab coats or physics equipment or something. People don't have a really good understanding of research in the natural world, what it's made up of, and why you do it. We also, in our proposal, plan to discontinue the display of belugas by the end of 2029. That date is tied to the expiry of our license-to-occupy agreement. So no matter what any of us think, this topic is coming back to the table in 2029 or 2028 late for discussion as the terms of that, the next license-to-occupy, are negotiated. The timeframe permits a couple or three things. It permits an orderly transition of our mission, our visitor experience, and our research to a future without belugas in Stanley Park. It also ensures that in that timeframe, we continue to be able to operate the marine mammal rescue center. And there are two key points that you'll hear from Dr. Helena, but they involve the ability to have professionally trained first responders and the ability then to deal with those few animals that cannot, for whatever reason, go back to nature to provide a home for them. Marty?
I won't repeat the quote here, but I think we can all understand that the Arctic is in some trouble. There are definitely people out there who disagree, but most scientists do think that the Arctic is in trouble and that we have climate change occurring in front of us.
Sorry. Can you introduce yourself to the group?
Oh, I'm so sorry about that. Yeah. I'm Martin Helena. I'm the head veterinarian at the Vancouver Aquarium. Thanks, you guys. Canada's belugas are separated into a number of populations. The one population we're most concerned about right now is the beluga population at St. Lawrence. That's a population that was estimated to be historically at about 10,000 to 20,000 animals. It's currently at about 800 animals now and decreasing by about 1%, 1.5% annually. One of the big issues with them is calf mortality in recent time and lack of response to those calves on a national level. We also know that noise can be a problem for cetaceans, and increased traffic noise, be it in the Arctic or be it in St. Lawrence, is an issue. And you saw Valeria's work on that. We know that a lot of that started at the aquarium, and that was the video that you saw. There's a lot of other things that have started at our aquarium that are being used worldwide. Other big areas of research that we have to get into if we want to save beluga include food supply, ecology of food for beluga, understanding metabolism, especially in the face of a warming earth, understanding how their energetic needs change, how their behavior changes in the face of that kind of change. The impact of pollutants and contaminants. The St. Lawrence population in particular is known worldwide as one of the most contaminated populations of marine mammal anywhere, and that is thought to have a limiting factor at play. And we also know that diseases are emerging where they weren't thought to emerge before. Things like toxoplasmosis, things like Haemobartena are in animals that are hunter-cot in the Arctic. And as you know, there's probably about 150 beluga that are eaten every day, or excuse me, every year in Canada. And those animals are an important food source for our First Nations. Protecting those people is a priority for us as well. Knowing how diseases that can affect humans enter the Arctic environment is very important. We rescue and we rehab, and maybe this is another video for the computer people in the back there. Locally and internationally, cetaceans are threatened. I'm sorry? Oh.
Separated from his mother and pod, this orphaned calf was found washed ashore on a beach near Tofino, B.C. Early reports identified him as a stranded harbor porpoise. Exhausted and near death, he was in extremely poor condition. Fortunately, Canada's only team of marine mammal rescue experts were ready to step in. The team led by Dr. Martin Helena had many previous successes rescuing and releasing other marine mammals in need. They quickly realized what they had found was not a harbor porpoise at all, but an extremely rare, false killer whale calf. He was estimated to be only four weeks old. Because of his young age and critical condition, the chances of him just surviving the night were less than 10%. After months of rehabilitation and over 11,500 staff and volunteer hours, and against all odds, Chester, as he was now known, had survived. But his future was still unclear. On May 26, 2015, the Department of Fisheries and Oceans Canada declared that Chester lacked the ability to survive in the wild and deemed him non-releasable. The Vancouver Aquarium was asked to provide a foster home for the orphaned whale. Initially, Chester was kept in a research pool where, under careful care, he slowly grew stronger. But Chester, like most toddlers, craved constant attention. It was decided to try and move him into a larger habitat with a new companion, Helen, a rescued Pacific whitesided dolphin. When the two were first introduced, the whole aquarium held its breath and hoped. The results have been nothing short of amazing.
You want to watch me cuddle Nodder? That one's even more ah. I'm not sure what the woman on the top's showing us, but if you could switch back to my talk, thank you. We absolutely believe in rescue, rehabilitation, release, if possible. Euthanasia is the alternative for these animals on the beach. I personally feel that's not in that animal's best interest. It's a loss in terms of animal welfare. It's a lost opportunity for education. It's a lost opportunity for more research and learning more about where these animals come from and what they need to survive. Our team is awesome. We are certainly the best in Canada. We are now approximately the fourth-largest marine mammal rescue center in the world. We are absolutely unique in Canada. We've got some tremendous successes, including a release of a harbor porpoise. That is the first cetacean ever to be released in Canada that's ever come into a facility. We're also instrumental in releasing Springer Killer Whale and a number of other animals you've probably never heard of, because we do a lot of work all the time. Without the ability to keep going, to have animals in our care like beluga, and I mentioned the threatened population in the St. Lawrence, and our ability to help those animals, you can't be good at what you don't do. You can't turn on and turn off a machine that needs to keep getting better, that needs to keep having practice. Your emergency room doctor doesn't sit at home for six months out of the year and suddenly run into the hospital to save you in a heart attack. They do that all the time. And that's who we are, and that's what our animals at the aquarium do. What you don't see is the veterinarians we've taught. What you don't see is the countless students, professional students, that come through that are better people and go on to do a better thing because of who we are and the opportunities we provide them, which are absolutely unique in Canada and very rare in the rest of the world. And I believe it's someone else's turn now.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Daryl Moriama, and I'm the current chair of the board of the Vancouver Aquarium. We live in an age of mistruths and alternative facts. It seems people can basically say whatever they like, and it gets printed as fact. Well, I'd like to present a number of facts to you this evening, facts that have been substantiated and verified. My purpose in presenting here this evening is to ask you to base your decisions on those facts and not innuendo. Like you, our board has struggled with this situation as well. We all want to do what we believe is the right thing for the animals, for nature, and for the community in Vancouver. So here are the facts we worked with, our board worked with, to come to the conclusions we did. You've heard many of them already. Populations of beluga whales are decreasing at an alarming rate. For example, the estimates of the St. Lawrence population 100 years ago, which was 10,000 to 12,000, have now dwindled to 800. Vancouver Aquarium currently has five beluga whales cared for at other accredited institutions. These beluga whales would not survive in the wild. The Vancouver Aquarium does not take beluga whales from the wild. In fact, in 1996, made it a permanent commitment to no longer collect cetaceans from the wild. The last wild whale came to Vancouver 27 years ago. Our marine mammal rescue center takes great pride in rehabilitating and returning to the wild any animal that has a reasonable chance of survival. Some rescued marine mammals cannot be released due to their inability to survive in the wild, as we've just heard. We do not believe these animals should be euthanized. Rather, we believe they should be given the best possible life we can give them. We are building a completely new, significantly expanded facility. The proposal to build a bigger facility is not a new proposal. It was reviewed and sanctioned by you, the park board, some time ago. We have spent more than $10 million of donor and government capital money towards the next phase of the project, and construction of the new facility has been scheduled long before the recent deaths of our two belugas. We intend to bring back some animals for a maximum 10-year period after construction of the new habitat. Our rationale is straightforward. We believe they will have the best quality of life in our aquarium. At the same time, we will develop an expanded onsite beluga research program limited to 10 years. We're doing this because we think it's important to continue this research, to contribute to a reversal of this negative population trend, and for us to truly make a positive difference, which is the main reason we do what we do. So why 10 years and not now? We feel strongly this is not the time to give up on beluga whales in Canada. The 10 years of research gives us time to plan an orderly transition of our efforts to help save this endangered beluga population. I would also like to point out that the aquarium is a not-for-profit organization. We do not receive funds from government sources for any operating costs. Yes, governments at various levels have contributed to the construction of our facilities, but we must raise funds. I'm sorry.
End it up. The time's up for the group. You could just...
I'm at the very end. So I just wanted to say, instead of saying "not in my backyard," I would rather us say "not another endangered species dying off on my watch." I would ask you to make your decisions based on the facts and to give positive consideration to our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for our speakers? Commissioner Cooper, you're up.
Thank you. Dr. Moriama, I'd like to ask you a question, just a clarification. You had mentioned that the research program would go on for 10 years, which is the amount of time the suggestion is that the whales, the beluga cetaceans, would stay. Are you suggesting that at the end of 10 years, you would cease the beluga research program once there were no belugas? Would you not continue the research in the wild?
In the wild, yes, but not onsite.
Okay, so that was what I was trying to get my head around, because that seemed to be a bit confusing.
Yeah, and eventually, maybe in other facilities. Because the truth is that, as you'll hear from some of the speakers, I think, research needs to be done both in the wild and occasionally with animals that are trained to participate. So for example, you can't do metabolic studies by jumping out of a boat on top of a wild whale. You need to do it with whales that are trained to participate. So the research certainly is not going, the need for research is not going to end at the end of 10 years. But if there are no belugas in the Vancouver Aquarium, that research will have to be done elsewhere and in the field.
Right, that makes sense. Thank you. Follow-up question to that. I'm just trying to get my head around this large expansion, which has been previously approved, has been acknowledged. But to continue that expansion up and for 10 years, and then there would no longer be cetaceans there, what happens to that facility? What is that facility used for? What's the plan? What would the plan be going forward?
So absent the two deaths and this kind of hearing that's going on, the aquarium would have begun construction in September of a new Canada's Arctic, approximately three times bigger than the current Arctic for the belugas and about twice as big for the people, because both research and the expanded public, generating public awareness and interest are both mandates. So with our compromise proposal, we would redesign that as a reduced facility, still much bigger than the current Arctic, but one specifically that can be designed to be convertible to other species as that time between now and 2029 allows a better understanding of what the other challenges are for marine mammals in the Arctic. And of course, those would most likely be pinup heads, seals, called ice seals, which are also challenged by changing climate and some of these other factors. So it builds a convertible facility, not as large as the original facility, because the original facility was built on the premise that there would be belugas in Vancouver for the foreseeable future and that reproduction would be part of that. That's what we were set to build, and that's basically what had been approved by the park board. So we modified that to a reduced footprint, but designed in a way to be convertible to the issues and the species that emerge over this 10-year period as scientists get a better grip on what's actually happening in the Arctic and what the real issues are.
Okay, follow-up to that, then. The next logical question would be, what happens in 2029 to any belugas that are existing in those tanks if that was to move forward?
They would go live in some other institution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, you're up.
Thank you very much. Several questions. Dr. Helena, you have mentioned that your greatest concern are the belugas in the St. Lawrence. And has the research that you have done at the Vancouver Aquarium contributed to the health and well-being of any of the belugas in the St. Lawrence?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, so Valeria doing the Arctic thing, she's been there as well. So noise is, I think I mentioned, is a big concern in big shipping lanes like the St. Lawrence. So one of the big hypotheses for lack of recovering is increased shipping noise and interference with beluga vocalizations and transmission of noise between mother and calf. That's a proposed theory, one of several, but a proposed theory for why calves are separated from mom and lead to their death yet. So Valeria is for sure involved in that.
Sorry, that wasn't the question. You're understanding what the problem is, but are you leading to any solution?
Well, I know. I mean, if we had solutions, the belugas would be on the road to recovery. So we're at that stage where we just don't know enough. We need to know a lot more. That's what we're all about. So we try and figure out something using the animals out of facilities such as ours and get those tools out in the wild as best we can, and that is beginning, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder to the crowd, if we do hear people speak out, we will have to remove them from the room. Thank you.
A good question. In general, I understand that you do a lot of work in connection with researchers at UBC?
Yes.
And their research would go through the Animal Care Committee at UBC?
Yes.
And research that is sponsored by yourself, does it go through a similar kind of animal care committee?
Yeah, our internal animal care committee, yeah.
Your internal animal care committee?
Yeah, we work under the guidelines of the Canadian Council of Animal Care and have a committee based on those guidelines.
Do you have external parties in that committee?
Yes, absolutely.
From the university, for example?
We've got from Simon Fraser University, yes, not from UBC.
Okay, thank you. Question about your stated objective of having the belugas that are scheduled, that you're wanting to return to Vancouver, to be non-breeding. I heard you explain that that was, in fact, you made kind of fun of some people that thought that that would be a potential idea. How would these be non-breeding belugas if your view is that nature takes its course?
Well, if we bring back all boys or all girls, nature can take all the course it wants, and we're not going to have any babies. So it would have to be a single-sex group, because so far, there's no proven contraceptive method that's safe long-term if you have mixed sexes.
So you have, there are four female belugas that our aquarium owned that are currently in the United States and one male. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you would be bringing back only four, maximum?
No, not necessarily. And we will bring back some of the belugas we have, but when you hold a group of animals, one of the most important things is that they're behaviorally compatible. Like you can have four dogs in a house, and they better all get along, or you know, one's odd dog out, and you have to, you know. So the same with any group of animals, that there has to be behavioral compatibility. And so if you're putting the limit on it of a single-sex group in behavioral compatibility, we imagine, and this all has to be worked out, but we imagine that the bulk of the animals coming back would be our females, but there may be another female or two that aren't technically ours that come with that group on loan to make a compatible, social group, a research-oriented group.
And what is, sorry, when would the earliest be that the belugas that you would be planning to bring back, would they be returning? When would be the earliest?
Depends on the construction schedule. Depends on the construction schedule, but the construction schedule we were operating under is starting after Labor Day with completion before spring break of 2019, when meant whales coming back at the very end of 2018 or early in 2019. I imagine if we're redesigning to the proposal that we've made, that probably shoves back three months or four months. So call it sometime in the winter, spring of 2019.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask you if you are aware of any zoo or aquarium that has discontinued an animal display without public pressure?
Well, I think aquariums, and I'll speak to aquariums more than zoos, modify which animals they take care of all the time, and both in terms of the, as understanding evolves of care requirements, sizes of facilities, for example, or care needs, some displays are discontinued. I'd have to think a minute before I could, and we probably can give you a list of some of the changes that various aquariums have made. In the case of Vancouver Aquarium ending its display of orcas in 2001, that principally was for two reasons. One is that with the death of the male, we could not find a companion animal, but because of our extensive research program, both in the aquarium and in B.C., in the wild, we knew that we were unlikely to ever be able to afford or get permission to build an orca habitat large enough. And so we made the purposeful choice to discontinue and do what we thought was best for the female and send her off to live with other killer whales.
Question, does the death rate of your Belugas concern you?
The death of anything always concerns me, and death is part of life, unfortunately. And it is, the question I get asked all the time, is that death rate abnormal or unusual? That's probably a question you should address to Marty more specifically. So I'll answer the concern part and say, yes, it concerns us a lot. We always hate to see any animal die, and particularly in the case of Keela and Aurora, where those deaths appear unnatural, it's even more concerning.
Well, there was a Beluga death that was attributed to the Beluga swallowing coins. That wouldn't be a natural death either, I don't think.
I don't believe that was the... That was not the final diagnosis on that animal, so that was a finding in that animal, but that was deemed to be incidental. At the end of the day, the final cause was actually unknown, which is also concerning, but some cardiovascular change was deemed to be the approximate cause of death.
And over the last 10 years, how many of the Belugas that have been in your care have died?
Shh. I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Over the last 10 years, how many of the Belugas that have been in your care have died?
There have been two calves, one elderly female, and then the two recent females.
That would be five?
That's five.
Five in 10 years. And how many cetaceans overall in the last two, three years have died?
So in addition, there was two, oh, gosh, last three years was Jack our porpoise, Hannah our dolphin, that there's a major paper coming out on, because she was the most extensive surgical intervention in a cetacean ever accomplished. There was Kavanaugh our whale, that was 41, that died of a cancer, and it was reproductive cancer, which is actually really similar to the St. Lawrence Beluga, so she's another publication that's coming out. The two calves I mentioned, and then the two whales, and then Jack, who is a rehabilitated porpoise, he died of acute renal failure.
Do you, as a scientist, have any concern about keeping animals, these large animals in captivity, and the rate of death that is associated with them?
As Dr. Nightingale suggests, I have a huge concern with any death that happens as a veterinarian in a facility, for sure. Like Dr. Nightingale also said, life and death does happen. That's especially true of an elderly animal, and unfortunately, or fortunately, a lot of the animals in our care are living much longer than their wild counterparts, like Kavanaugh, like Laverne, a dolphin that passed away with us. So that's one side of things. The other side of things, unfortunately, is calf mortality. Right now, we've got a 40% to 50% mortality rate in our resident killer whales, same serve rate in Balnos Dolphin through Florida, and probably a higher rate in Beluga in the St. Lawrence, so that does happen. What is concerning is not knowing exactly why some of those animals died. To put things in perspective, a veterinarian that worked for the largest marine mammal rehabilitation facility in the world for about 10 years, probably saw somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 to 1,400 lives stranded animals every year, about half of those animals die, which is not a bad thing for rehabilitation facility. You bring in animals who are quite sick, you expect a high mortality rate. But in my nine years at that facility, and that many mortalities, we're talking about thousands of animals, I've examined and necropsied, I don't recall not finding a cause of death. To have two whales pass away in short proximity, and despite an incredibly involved, complicated, and thorough review of those cases and not having definitive cause of death, is tremendously worrying. It is also an incredibly big reason to keep going and keep trying and keep figuring these animals out, because something's killing them around.
Well, so do you think that your facility is actually a safe environment, then, for whales, if they're dying without any explanation? There's just three you've told us about.
So I'll stick to the last two whales, just to keep things in perspective, but...
Well, you said the one that didn't die with the coins. You don't know what it died of, so that would be three that you don't know.
So again, sometimes a little difficult with the back there. So again, is it concerning? Absolutely. Is our facility safe?
Is your facility safe? Yeah.
Our facility is very safe. You have to understand, those Belugas were living there for two decades or more, longer than the average life expectancy of Beluga in the wild, which is listed as 15 years by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans currently. It's probably a little bit higher.
If you look at sort of the seven question, can I keep going, or do I have to...
We will bring you back after your five minutes. Commissioner Kirby Young.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a number of questions, and a lot in the interest of clarification, I think it was raised that there may be some misfacts out there, so I want to make sure that the board and the public are operating from a position of clarity. So I'll pick up on the last train of thought from Commissioner Evans, and in terms of the two recent deaths that I think spawned this conversation in November 2016, and I know, Dr. Helena, you made some very impassioned comments in the media, that you wouldn't rest, I think it was, until you found out what the cause of those were, and I believe, Dr. Nightingale, you commented, if I'm correct, that you wouldn't be bringing Belugas back until you'd ascertain the cause, which I don't believe has happened yet. So my question is, at this stage, you believe that you cannot determine the cause, and what has changed in the proposal now to move forward with an expansion proposing bringing Belugas back, when you stated previously that you would not?
So what I can answer is my own statement, which is I wouldn't rest, and I have not. There is information coming back from those whales as recently as today, and then we will keep getting information from those whales, and I will not rest and put that aside until we have more answers, so let's be clear on that. Also, to put things in perspective, these were two whales that, I'm not going to count all the investigation that went into the cause of their morbidity while they were still alive, but since their death, they've been reviewed by external panels that have come through our aquarium. They've been reviewed independently by five different histopathology labs, including forensic human laboratories. They've been reviewed by four independent university toxicology laboratories. They've been reviewed by four independent metagenomic labs.
Maybe I can, I know there's been a very concerted effort, and I appreciate that, and I am conscious of time, and I have a number of questions I want to get through, so maybe we can move to the second part of the question, if Dr. Nightingale would like to comment around the previous statement.
Maybe we can short-circuit that answer a bit, because our board asked the same question. You know, how can you propose to bring back Belugas if you don't know exactly what killed them? So as Marty said, the whales have been researched six ways to sendy. So while we don't know exactly what killed them, we know a whole bunch of things that didn't kill them. So as Marty will say, almost assuredly, it wasn't a disease, almost assuredly, it was a toxin. There are only so many places a toxin can come from, and some of those you kind of rule out, because, for instance, all the other animals eating the same food were just fine. But, so when our board asked us the same question, we said, well, there are three most likely issues. There's one associated with the food we fed them, and we already do and did considerable monitoring of the food, and that's already been redoubled, and as part of these investigations, all kinds of new tests are now being made and are possible. One is that it had something to do with the water or operations, and any new whales that come back will go into an entirely new state-of-the-art exhibit with new life support filtration and treatment systems. Or it was human poisoning, sabotage. And the answer to that is greatly enhanced security. And so the new exhibit is designed in a much less accessible way to people outside the aquarium, wanting to get things inside the aquarium.
Okay, I'm going to move on to my next question, thank you, which relates to the proposal on the non-breeding population, and I think you did answer that you would achieve that through single-sex groups. I know in the past, you've been a vocal proponent of trying to create environments where animals can engage in their natural behaviors, which includes companionship, breeding, et cetera. Do you not think that companionship would not be achieved by a single-sex population, A, and B, would you send out your whales once they were brought back for breeding at other facilities?
Well, I think that my preference as a biologist would be to keep animals as groups closely approximating nature as you can. And so if you go watch Belugas in someplace like the St. Lawrence or Churchill River, you'll see them living all mixed together, kind of calves, mothers, males, all living together. Frankly, we would prefer to have that kind of a group, and that's what we planned to build and would have built, starting in September. But I've heard the criticism, the aquarium doesn't listen to you all politicians or the community, and we have proposed a compromise. That is something we will do, because that's what has to be done in the local circumstances. It's probably from a biological and a behavioral point of view for the Belugas, not the best thing to do.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And another question that relates to sort of a future look and forward-looking is $100 million, or whatever the number is left in terms of the remaining expansion and perhaps the adjusted plan that you're proposing, is a lot of money for a 10-year period, and I know you mentioned a convertible facility. Why not spend the time now thinking about what those other models or the paradigm of the aquarium of the future could look like, whether it's virtual reality or a different aquarium experience, or looking at alternatives? Why spend such a significant amount of funds in that period of time if the plan is to change it in 10 years, anyway?
So the $100 million is the full three phases of revitalization, the first phase of which is already done, we're talking about the second phase, and the third phase, which is rebuilding the current Canada's Arctic into an expanded B.C. Wild Coast, will come in the future after this current phase. So the current phase is in the range of $22 to $24 million. We have time restrictions from donors in terms of spending that money. We're at risk of losing significant money in the $5 to $10 million range if we don't complete by 2019. And so trying to envision that long-term future and get it right for what we need 10 and 20 years from now is going to be extremely hard, and that's why, one of the reasons we proposed a transition period where we know we can contribute both from a research and public engagement point of view with Belugas, while we have the time to plan out that future.
Have you looked at a preliminary high-level alternatives for having cetaceans? And a clarification question, because it was raised in the staff report, and I think you're, I want to ask the source directly. The staff suggested that your proposal that you announced on February 20th related to Belugas and not cetaceans, is that correct? Or are you planning to phase out all cetaceans at the end of 2029?
No, we proposed to end the display and research on Belugas at the end of 2029.
Belugas specifically, so you could conceivably have a false killer whale, harbor porpoise, stellar sea lions, or other animals?
Yeah.
Okay. And following up on that other question, is the plan to spend time looking at alternatives, potentially, to having animals or to looking at more of a museum-type experience?
Yeah, I mean, we did have a look. We first stepped way back and said, okay, we're planning to build an Arctic. Should we do that? Should we build a giant tropical reef instead? Should we build a shark tank? But it's pretty clear that the Arctic is a huge chunk of Canada, it's 44% of our country. It's pretty much as unknown to Canadians as it is to people south of the border. It's a place where climate, changing climate is causing ecological change faster than any place on the planet. And because of our historic work in the Arctic and our displays and the Belugas and the research, we're one of the, we're probably the single-largest public connection point between the general public and Arctic issues and Arctic species. There's being, you know, the Museum of Nature is going to open a new exhibit this year, and there's a polar bear exhibit at the Toronto Zoo and one at a Cinnabon Park, but there aren't a lot of places where the public can interact, either in person or in the digital universe, with what's going on in the Arctic. So our board said, no, you need to stick to the Arctic. From a mission point of view, it's a role that we need to continue playing. So then you say to yourself, and our board asked us, what would, we know what you were proposing to build, what would an Arctic with no Belugas look like and function like? And that's where the proposal to land in between the two in order to be able to have an orderly, organized, efficient transition process to a future without Belugas onsite.
Okay, that was a very good segue into my next question, when you reference an orderly transition. Have you contemplated, and I'm sure you have, what would you do if the federal bill S203 passes right as you're about to open the expanded facility, or shortly thereafter?
Well, it's not clear yet what S203 is going to include at all. It certainly exempts rescued animals and very likely is going to exempt research animals, otherwise it would shut down forever research in this country. And so those are bridges I think we're going to have to cross as the Fisheries and Oceans Committee of the Senate hears various points of view and begins to deliberate how they're going to mark up that bill before it goes to the full Senate. And of course, the history in this country of Senate bills ever passing the House is slim, very slim. And so when you go to the House, you have to interact with the government in power of the day and their political will. So there's a long, long road to go before we know what will happen.
Okay. How am I doing for time? Do you want to move on?
I was going to say, let's move on, we'll come back.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Shum, you're up.
Thank you. So you mentioned more research is needed, and can you tell us some of these specific examples of research that has been done at the Vancouver Aquarium that can be integrated and used in the wild to help the animals out in the wild?
Well, sure. You know, we'll exclude Valeria's thing already about noise and threats there. I've got, I can just go over my last few emails from the last couple of days. So first of all, I've got questions from Cascade Research Foundation, they're in Washington. Dr. Robin Bear studies an endangered population of false killer whale. They do some photographic work underwater there, trying to figure out a way to age animals and age growth. So he's been very excited to meet Chester now for the last few years, and as late as two days ago, asked for measurements and photographs and looking at different parameters to ground truth, that sort of method. That's been used for killer whales, that's been used for Beluga as well, and every species. Our porpoise, we're involved in a study to look at acoustic instrumentation, to basically get an acoustic image, and that's resulted in better survey methods for vaqueta through the Gulf of California. You know what that species is? You don't know what the vaqueta are? They're currently the most endangered cetacean in the world. There's about 30 animals, and they're decreasing rather rapidly. They will be a species that will become extinct in our very near lifetime unless there's some very drastic work. some very drastic work. Other things we've done, oh gosh, the two whales that passed away have already contributed to our understanding of aging beluga from their teeth. There's been a huge discrepancy in how teeth layers are laid down. The information I received today from the researcher was that Tequila, because she's an absolutely known age older animal, has almost conclusively defined how we will age beluga going forward. That's huge. The two whales that just passed away have also provided evidence and tissues for mapping out the beluga genome. That allows us to go ahead and explore how beluga are related, how populations grow. More importantly, it's a tool now used to investigate foreign DNA, foreign RNA, looking for pathogens as a very clear way to identify those things. That's the last two days. I just received words that, a paper that a student started on our beluga, looking at how testicular size varies through seasons. This started long ago when we had our male with us, of course, since, before he moved away. But that's invaluable for looking at seasonal reproductive rates and engaging how populations will grow in the wild. I've also, a paper coming out, again, this last five days of people telling me what papers are coming out. Emily Choi from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans is looking at fatty acid profiling and looking at what beluga diets, what they eat and how that diet changes over time. That was using our whales because they know what the animals are eating, what's going in there. I can go on for hours.
There's kind of a joke among scientists, and it's a piece of research a lot of people don't understand, and it goes that every answer gets you two more questions in science. And so it's true, particularly when you're dealing with wild animals and wild populations, that you only have partial windows into. I mean, it's dark half the year in the Arctic, pitch black. One reason belugas rely on acoustics. It's frozen part of the year and inaccessible. So you have very limited windows into those animals in the wild. And when you get a question, for instance, the contaminant work on beluga populations, well, that was pretty easy. You get dead belugas on the beach, you send them off to a lab, and you discover that they're probably among the most polluted mammals on the planet. Then you get the question, you go, so you got an answer, but the question is, well, what does that mean to the whale? Is it interfering with their immune system? Is it limiting their ability to absorb food and digest food? Well, for some of those questions, then you need to come back to animals that are trained to participate. So you need the tool. That answers to some of those questions is going to send you back to the field to say, okay, well, we now understand some of the metabolic needs, but how does that relate to what they're eating in the wild? Has their diet changed? Are fish that they used to eat no longer abundant? So that's fishery studies back in the wild. And that's very typical, whether it's lions in Africa or belugas in the St. Lawrence, that you have that bounce back and forth. Until you get down to a really fine-grained research, every answer does get you two more questions.
Okay. Now, in terms of, say, a whale out there that has nets caught, how would you, what would you have learned in the aquarium to be able to help the animals in the wild, to untangle them and rescue them?
Oh my gosh, that's very easy. I mean, our old sea lion program demonstrates that, you know, the techniques that we go out and dart the animals with to take off garbage. It's a first-of-its-kind program anywhere in the world, we're leaders in taking garbage off of sea lions. That comes from our sea lions and the anesthetics we had to use on them, in particular, an adult male that had cancer that required very delicate, very repeated procedures for chemotherapy. That's where that stuff comes from. For whales, some of the techniques for very large whales that do involve some sedations, and now we're talking northern right whales, a very endangered species off the coast, those remote sedation techniques were developed by using animals in aquariums as well. Obviously not our sea lions, but we weren't directly involved with that, but other aquariums were. And it's a very collaborative program. So, yeah, and wound healing. You know, I get reports from researchers, oh my gosh, you know, this thing has got this wound, that one, what's your diagnosis and what's your prognosis? You know, should we intervene? And that's where we come in as well. We know how wounds heal, we know how things get better. Some of that's from our rehab facility, but some of it's from our animals that live with us as well. I was at a meeting for the last two days on killer whale and southern resident killer whales in Seattle. This was attended by one of the higher-level NOAA Fisheries folks and some big officials. And we're looking at having, we're coming to 80 animals or less, right? We're all sitting around counting backwards on these animals. And it's coming to the time where we need to figure out how to treat these animals as individuals and providing a medical record for these animals, figuring out when it might be time to do something for each individual to help them out through a crisis as, you know, as things go. Well, as we're looking around the table, and we've got Canadians and Americans, and we're figuring out contingency plans for these animals, I have to be incredibly proud to say, as the Americans are struggling, what we're going to do with an animal that strands or what we're going to do with an animal that intervenes, the Canadians went, that was Dr. John Ford, he says, well, I mean, obviously if an animal strands, we're all going to call each other. That's Lance Barrett Leonard who works for us, that's Graham Ellis, that's John Ford, those DFO people, Marty, I mentioned my name, it was nice of them. We're going to figure out what needs to be done and we're going to do it. We're going to bring the animal to the aquarium, we're going to bring the animal to a facility, we're going to fix it, and we're going to all work together and do the very best we can. That's a huge deal. That's because of us.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner McKinnon.
Thank you. I've got three questions I hope that can be answered in short answers here. In the Arctic, what's the, say, the yearly range that a pod of belugas will swim? How far they swim in a year from one end to the other? And how far do they dive?
You want to go?
So in the Arctic, there, depending on who's counting, more or less 30 populations of belugas between principally Canada, the U.S., and Russia. And so the answer depends on the circumstances. So belugas tend not to go anywhere until they have to because of freeze-up. So belugas, and you see stories in the media occasionally about them getting trapped in ice where they screwed up and didn't start to migrate fast enough and ice formed and they got trapped. So they migrate away from ice. They won't be frozen in if they can help it. So it depends on where they are. If they're in Churchill, they have to go far enough south in Hudson's Bay that they can live in open-water Palinas during the winter. So that's a several hundred-kilometer migration. Other places, like the St. Lawrence, they don't migrate that far because...
What's not far?
Well, you're going to, we're going to have to ask a field scientist, you've gotten to the end of my knowledge, but I know that it's highly variable. So the difference between belugas and killer whales, for example, is killer whales eat, our southern residents eat principally salmon. They have to go where the salmon are, where the grocery store is, to find dinner. Whereas belugas pretty much graze wherever they are as they go along. And in terms of diving depth, we'll have to get back to you. I can't, I can't tell you what a natural...
The information I have is they can dive as far as 700 meters.
I wouldn't doubt it.
So my question then is, how big are the tanks that you're building and how deep are they?
They are not 700 meters deep.
No, they certainly aren't. And how long are they?
So the question is, does the beluga do that because it wants to or because it has to to go find food?
And how deep are the tanks that you're building?
Third, 10-point-something meters, 30...
And the length?
Four feet, 100, and I'm going to deal in feet. The proposed, the revised slightly smaller tank that's in our proposal, I think is 175 feet, one-dimensional length by 70 or 80 feet the other way in a teardrop shape. So it's by all standards, including Canada's Canadian Council of Animal Care standards, which are the most aggressive standards in the world for facilities. It exceeds those standards by quite a bit.
All right, speaking of standards, the accreditation, in your presentation that you've sent to us in the binder, you talk about accredited aquarium standards. And your executive vice president, Clint Wright, sent us an email today in which he talks about that. And he talks about CASA and ASA and some other organizations. Are these outside independent accreditors or are they an internal self-regulated accreditation?
So both. So Canada's Accredited Zoos and Aquariums, CASA, is an industry membership association of zoos and aquariums that runs a rigorous every-five-years accreditation process that has an independent inspector on the inspection teams. CASA enforces the Canadian Council of Animal Care standards, these aggressive standards that must be followed. The Association, American Zoos and Aquarium Association, is still following what we consider outdated U.S. government standards, which those accreditation standards are being upgraded.
So that means that you're accrediting marine land and marine land's accrediting you?
No, I mean, you have, it's a formal accreditation process, not unlike the law society uses or the medical profession uses.
The law society is under legislation.
Pardon?
The law society is under legislation. You're not.
No, and, no, we're not under legislation. We're actually...
In your answer to Commissioner Kirby Young, you said that keeping same-sex grouping at the aquarium was not biologically and socially the best thing for them. Do you think keeping them in tanks in an aquarium is the best thing for them?
All of those animals currently live in tanks. They're not going to the wild. So the question is, are they going to live with us and the great care we provide? Or are they going to live in some other aquarium?
But is it the best thing for cetaceans to be living in tanks?
No, I often say I would prefer to live in a world where we don't need aquariums and zoos. But unfortunately, that's not the case, and things are getting worse in nature quickly. So we do need them more than ever.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have myself up in the queue. I'll follow up on the questioning here, Commissioner McKinnon. Currently, the belugas that are owned by the aquarium are currently at facilities around North America. And are they being dealt with by veterinarians that are at the top of their game? Is this, are they in research facilities currently?
They're in aquariums.
Yes.
And all those aquariums do host researchers and have, some of them have researchers on staff. All of them work with outside university researchers who may come in. In terms of the caliber of the veterinarians, my belief is that given the visibility of these animals, any institution probably besides us, I'm guessing pays a lot of attention to the quality of their care and their veterinary care, but Marty, you can talk about that.
Yeah, I'm the incoming president of the International Association for Aquatic Animal Medicine, so I'm, I know all those veterinarians. Yeah, without a doubt, all the facilities that our whales are at are top-notch facilities with good veterinarians.
Perfect. And we talked about today already that the loss of beluga calves is the major threat right now in the St. Lawrence. And we're not going to have breeding abilities here in the aquarium. So we will not be able to research that, but if we keep the belugas at their current locations, that research can be done, is that correct?
Which research?
The research on calves, women, the sound barriers between calves and their mothers.
Well, like we said, some of that has been done at our facility. So that particular tool, although I'm sure it can be refined, and again, if you ask a researcher, they're going to come up with five more questions, right? So if you ask an acoustician, they're going to say, no, we need more stuff. But yeah, you know, certainly that stuff is ongoing and certainly needs to be refined.
Yeah. So in the, speaking about research is the biggest reason to have belugas here at the Vancouver Aquarium and that the research would be better off if we left them at the current facilities that they're at. Would you agree with that?
No.
Be able to do more research because they'll be able to be with males and females so that we're happier together, we'll be able to deal with breeding. Your aquarium currently in Spain has a new calf that you can do research on, so the veterinarians that are here in Vancouver can go and do research. So research wouldn't be the number-one component of the aquarium here, is that correct?
Oh my gosh. So you have a sort of a strange line of questioning on research, there's not just one question, right? It's all about what your question is.
Yeah.
Can a group of same-sex female, three to five beluga at the Vancouver Aquarium answer important questions? Without a doubt. Answers on metabolism, and we might be a lot more, a lot better situated, especially with our collaborative program with UBC on physiology than many other institutions. So we might be, dare I say, probably one of the best situations for doing physiology-based work. So that sort of question can be answered. Not so much if you're looking at calf to mom acoustics, but there is a lot of other acoustic work. And one of the biggest areas right now is the other end, is hearing thresholds and how hearing thresholds change in animals as they age and go through time. So that stuff can still be done on a same-sex group of animals. Energetics.
So that, then, that research can also be done at the facilities they currently are at?
Oh, you can't stop doing research. And a lot of this stuff is done at a lot of places collaboratively as well, obviously.
Well, and I know that you guys do amazing work, and if the cetaceans were no longer at the aquarium, you guys would still be a science marine center here that would do great work in the Vancouver, is that correct?
We would not be leading the field in a group of animals that is very sensitive and very important. So if we don't have cetaceans at the aquarium, then we would not be getting better in helping cetaceans in Canada.
Do you think that with the calves, a lot of it, you know, on the east coast, do you think that the federal government should be stepping up and putting a research facility to help near the water and not here on the west coast?
So a research facility?
Yes. I think, right, do you think the federal government should step in here because the belugas are such an important species to the Canadian government? Do you think that they should be stepping in here and working with, helping veterinarians like you guys on research?
Absolutely. It's not like we don't work together, right? It's not like we work in an isolated bubble. The federal government has huge input and huge research facility or research goals, and a lot of their goals work in concert with us. We publish a lot with them. So it's all about what you do and where, but having a facility here that's already entrenched, everyone's here, we know, we know everybody, we know the players, we know how to work in a facility like this. You can't start that again from scratch. That's not easy.
The only cetaceans available to researchers in North America are in aquariums. There aren't any in universities or private hands simply because of the cost. So the only non-aquarium cetacean holder is the U.S. Navy, and their animals are available only to U.S. Navy science, whatever that might mean. So there's lots of research to be done, and different aquariums have different specialties. So in Canada, we only have marine land in the Vancouver Aquarium. Marine land allows outside researchers to come in, but the kinds of research you can do in their facility with their population is limited to a few topics. So with the whales we bring back here, our research is going to be limited. We are not going to be doing research on baby calves because we're not going to have any. But we're going to do lots of other kinds of research, and increasingly, these centers and scientists work together because it's too big a problem and there's too little resources to have duplication and overlap. So it's rapidly becoming more collaborative. And that's, I suspect, one reason why there is no federal government facility holding even so much as a seal anymore in this country. So the whales available in Vancouver are virtually the only whales reliably available to researchers in this country.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, you're up again.
Sorry, just a couple of questions, if I may. And I just want to go back to your average age of 15, the average age of life expectancy in the wild. One of your volunteers wrote and told me this in a letter a couple of nights ago. So I then looked at the age of death of all of the belugas that have died at the aquarium. One was 47, but there are calves, of course, too. And I calculated the average age of death, 15. Same thing. Like, yes, some live longer, a lot live shorter, but the argument that they live longer at an aquarium doesn't actually hold.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans, I clarify, are you saying they live, are you saying they live shorter?
I'm saying, I'm saying your assertion that they have longer... I'm saying, I'm saying your assertion that they have longer life.
Some do. That was my assertion.
Of course.
Yeah. Some do outlive, much outlive.
A question for you is, do some whales live longer than 15 in the wild?
Probably.
Thank you. Have, have you made, you're working with government, have you made policy recommendations to the government that would protect belugas in the Arctic or in the St. Lawrence?
So the principal lead organizations working on belugas in the St. Lawrence are an organization called GRAMMA, and that's a French acronym, and I can't tell you exactly what it means. But, but it's an NGO leading the research on beluga whales for consortium that includes the government of Quebec and the federal government. They work collaboratively with Department of Fisheries and Oceans, which has the primary federal mandate. And of course, that population was just upgraded to endangered from threatened in the last couple of years. So we work through them and with them because they are the principal kind of coordinator or air traffic controller of, of the research, how it's answering some of the key questions about what's causing the problem, what the next questions are that researchers need to answer. And what, you know, in terms of, of policy, one of the outcomes is that it's likely much more effort this summer will go into systematic surveying of beaches because the question is, are the dead baby belugas being seen on the beach? Are the researchers accidentally seeing them all? Or is it just the tip of the iceberg? And so the first sets of recommendations have to do with the kinds of research and more expansive research. But if you follow the logic of figuring out, like it's happening here in B.C. with the issue of noise and killer whales, which is on the verge of having some policy outcomes with the port and with shipping, that's a logical outcome in two or three years as the, if the research continues to identify that, that boat noise, ship noise overriding or masking the call of mothers and calves turns out to be partly responsible for calf deaths, it'll result in policy.
And that research is being carried out in the St. Lawrence?
Yes, but there's, Dr. Vergara, who identified these calls, would tell you there's a feedback loop now, which is to take some trained belugas and teach them to recognize the contact call from one particular mother and calf, and then mask it through, through played underwater ship noise and see where that breaking point is, where the ship noise masks the call and causes mother and calf to lose acoustic contact with each other. So again, that's, research starts one place, goes, it'll go back and forth several times.
So I'll just go back quickly, if I could, to the question I asked the general manager about conversations that I think you've had with another aquarium proponent in this city. And this would be an aquarium that does not have mammals at all. And if that were to happen, what would your business, what would happen to your business model?
I'm not worried about that happening. We have talked to, to the people involved in the other end of that rumor, who have said if the aquarium were to, to cease operation, they would be interested. But they have, as said, they have other cities to develop. They are not, there is no thought of going, of building in Vancouver in competition with the Vancouver Aquarium.
I see. And finally, your, your work, the work that drives your interest is the research in the marine science. 1.6 million people don't come through the door to see marine science. So do you find there, is a tension or an inconsistency in, in operating, on the one hand, a marine science center and on the other hand, a major tourist attraction?
If all we were doing was selling tickets for the entertainment of visitors, I would say yes. But that has never been the Vancouver Aquarium's method of operation. And increasingly, I mean, it's very clear that our, our primary impact on long-term sustainability of the oceans is going to be getting more people lighting that little flicker of awareness, the dawning of awareness, curiosity, interest, that leads to an understanding that we're all connected. How we live our lives, what we wear, what we eat, how we live, is having a larger and larger impact on the oceans. So that's probably where we're a global leader, is in that realization. And the realization that, starting from a, an anchor like the Vancouver Aquarium, we can work with partners around the world to engage more and more people. And our slang for that is we need to grow the choir, people who have some interest and awareness. Because if there were even a couple million Canadians talking about ocean issues over the water cooler and at dinner, governments notice, governments pay attention to public discourse.
Commissioner Crawford.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Dr. Helena, Dr. Nightingale, this is directed to. The marine science research or marine rescue mammal rescue center, sometimes it's the way it's talked like it's a separate structure altogether. Maybe you could talk how that is related to the aquarium. And as much as you can, what is the future of that under the many options that are on the table for us to consider?
So that department falls under me. There's a manager for that facility and they're a direct report to me. The reason I came to this aquarium is because we had a devoted research program with animals at the aquarium and because of that facility. That is my passion. To answer your second question, maybe unfortunately, I must be getting old. You're asking what the future of that facility is?
Of that, of that center facility process, program?
Well, right now, as I said, it's, it's the largest program of its kind in Canada. It relies absolutely on the aquarium financially, without a doubt. It relies absolutely on the aquarium for veterinarians, for facilities people, for electricians, for development people, for, for everything. So we are a part of the aquarium and tied very closely into the infrastructure of the aquarium. So, you know, anything that affects the aquarium is going to affect us. The other, the other aspect I think you're probably getting to is what would happen with cetaceans that stranded if we weren't allowed to take cetaceans? Well, that's a good question. I suppose there's a possibility of finding alternate homes for those animals. Those don't exist in Canada. I don't think marine land wants single animals of, I call this messed up Noah's Ark sometimes because the animals are, you know, we got one of this and one of that. That's what happens when you, when you do accept animals that can't be released. So, or, you know, find alternate homes somehow or euthanize those animals.
What's the outstation that we referred to in some of the documentation that the aquarium operates? Some island? I can't recall right now. Oh, I've never been there. In the tropics?
The aquarium, in partnership with UBC, operates a, a field research station in Burrard Inlet, where stellar sea lions, research-trained stellar sea lions work on research out in nature. In other words, they're trained to go out there and do something that helps scientists measure their energy, energy use and diet consumption and then, and then come back. So they're housed in a floating facility, off they go in a boat, do their dives, come back. So that's the field, the field, open water, so-called open water research station. The MMR is physically, the marine mammal rescue is physically separate from the aquarium. It's down on the Main Street Pier, and that's because you don't want to bring sick animals into the middle of a population of healthy ones. But as Marty said, if, if there is a no cetacean, if it's a no cetacean ban, that means no rescued animals that are unreleasable will be coming to the aquarium. And then, as Marty said, they either are going to be sent somewhere else, and that most likely means into the U.S., or they're going to be euthanized if, if we can't take cetaceans. And I've heard people say, oh, you can take rescued cetaceans. That's the case with Senate Bill 203. The problem with that is if you have a staff that has no hands-on experience taking care of cetaceans over time because of no cetaceans, you're not going to have the capability to rescue them, and you're not going to have a home to put them in. Because maintaining giant, expensive pools of water with no, no animals for interpretation and display, it isn't going to work either. It's no accident that, that all the animals available to researchers and all the rescue centers are attached to aquariums.
Excellent. Thank you. One question for Marty, if I might, maybe for Mr. Moriama. We've heard about oversight and other organizations that look, look over the aquarium, but I'm thinking at a local level, the board, there's a board at the aquarium.
Yes.
You don't have to go name names, but what oversight do they have of the aquarium and the work they do and how involved they've been in trying to resolve this issue and come up with a solution for the future and figure this out?
As I mentioned, it's, you know, we've, we've really struggled with this. This is, you know, something that, I mean, we, we feel we are the stewards of a 60-year-old organization. At the same time, we're trying to, to do what's best for the animals and we're trying to do what's best for the community. We think we've got a great board. We recruit for specifics. We recruit for, we've got some biologists sitting with us that can talk more of a technical piece. We've got financial people. We've got marketing people. We've got individuals who have worked on huge company organizations, that sort of thing. So we, we try to have a very good cross-section. And again, it's, you know, we feel that the stewardship of the organization's in our hands.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirby Young.
Thank you. I have three questions. First couple are factual, just again, in the spirit of a lot of different information that I hear out there, and I want to make sure we've got clear facts. So the first question is, does the Vancouver Aquarium breed its belugas off-site today through its other partner aquariums?
We don't. They are living with other belugas in other facilities in a variety of mixtures of groups of animals. And reproduction does and has and does occur.
Okay, so the, from your perspective, the breeding ban that was proposed but not enacted by the previous park board would not necessarily prohibit the beluga population that is owned by the aquarium from continuing to grow. Is that correct?
Functionally, it can't. I mean, that's a kind of an extraterritorial jurisdiction that no government or no aquarium would sign up for. I mean, if someone's going to take on care of, of somebody else's animal, the receiving institution needs to be able to, to manage that situation in how they deem best and what's best for that animal. And we do talk, there are places we would not send, you know, never mind a beluga, there are places we wouldn't send fish to other aquariums where we don't believe the care is a sufficient standard or particularly. So I know there's a lot of heat around, you know, around some aquariums, not so much how they take care of their animals, but how they present them to the public, the shows they do. We don't really have a say in saying to another aquarium, we're going to, we're going to ask you to hold one of our belugas, but you can't use it in one of your shows. Because if they're going to take on the, the task of caring for that animal long-term, they need, it becomes part of them for while it's with them, just as any animal that came to us would be.
Okay. Thank you. Second question, and this might be one for Dr. Helena. You can tell me who would be best to answer this one. What percent of the animals through the marine mammal rescue efforts that the Vancouver Aquarium has rescued and that have survived have been deemed releasable by DFO?
Oh, it's almost all, with the exception of the dependent calves, so the stationed calves. We probably get one or two on average. I haven't had any this year. Last year, we had one harbor seal that's deemed non-releasable, perhaps, out of up to 150 animals brought into the facility.
Okay, so for clarity, because I, I hear this a lot, and we get a lot of communications, park board commissioners, and people say that once the aquarium rescues an animal, it's never going back into the wild and they're just sustaining their population. So you are saying, just so we're clear for everybody, that the majority of the animals that are rescued and that do survive do get returned to the wild?
Yeah, so for example, 2016, I think we, we rounded about 154 harbor seals. We had our most successful year ever. I have a really fantastic crew. I don't want to jinx myself because, you know, some, something's going to happen next year, the environment will change. But we had 134 seals released out of that, nobody placed.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. And then the third one is a little bit more of a philosophical question, and I think it might be helpful for the board. And I'm going to address this one to Dr. Nightingale, is, does the Vancouver Aquarium recognize the authority of the park board to enforce and to amend its bylaws?
The short answer is yes. I mean, it's in our agreement that we will obey bylaws that are lawfully made. So that was the question we raised in 2014, was, was the bylaw, and we asked for a judicial review, was, was the bylaw within the scope of the powers granted by the Vancouver Charter?
And without getting into a lot of legal conversations, though, that's not appropriate for this table, but perhaps at a general level, you could suggest, why would you, what concern would you have had that that was not lawful to amend the bylaw? If there was already one that prevented the taking of cetaceans in the wild, which I know the aquarium stepped up and agreed not to do, how in your mind would it be different to prevent breeding?
Two things. One is the procedure or the process was different. I mean, we, we brought forward the proposal that we would not catch from the wild, and the park board asked us, can we embed that in our agreement? We said, absolutely. And they asked us, can we put it in a bylaw? And we said, absolutely. So it was a, it was a collaborative effort all the way through. What was proposed in 2014 wasn't collaborative, so the process was different. And the, the outcome of having, no offense, having politicians rather than biologists and animal behaviorists making decisions about how animals was managed was, in our view, questionable enough at the time that we, you know, if it had gone ahead, we would have gone ahead with the judicial review.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinnon.
Thank you. I think perhaps Mr. Moriama could answer. Approximately how much of your operating costs are derived from admissions?
Oh, goodness. Yeah, 68%.
No, that's fine. So you, you said that no taxpayer funding for operations, but would it be said that without taxpayer money for expansions, past, present, and future, you couldn't do those kinds of expansions?
Capital expansions, yes.
And through those expansions, you've increased your admissions?
Yes.
And so then taxpayers are subsidizing your operating costs through that?
Kind of, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Something's happened here. My button's not working, and so I'm, I'm at the back of the line here for some reason. Maybe I've been misbehaving recently, I'm not sure. My question is for Dr. Nightingale. Since the unfortunate recent deaths of the belugas, and the tanks are obviously now empty at this point, has there been any measurable effect on the attendance that you can measure at the Vancouver Aquarium?
Yes.
Could you enlighten us?
We're down about 12 to 14% in attendance. Of course, that's after three straight record years.
Right.
Which is certainly concerning to us because we live and die by, by the money we earn. But we, it has not escaped notice. We've had a interesting winter. And teasing apart the impacts of those two things exactly is pretty difficult.
Right. But over time, you'll have a clearer picture.
Yeah, one would hope the weather will stop doing what it's doing over time and we'll be able to attribute, attribute, more clearly attribute cause and effect.
I want to ask you another question, really, Anna. I want to get to the comment about the single-sex population. And you mentioned as, as... And you mentioned as, as that you, it wasn't the best thing. I'm, I'm just wondering how you, when you're thinking about it, the best in animal care, which is, is something that the aquarium is really known for, how are you able to sort of put those two things together? They're a little bit contrary to me.
They are a little bit.
Is it, is it because that's the only way you think it's going to be accepted going forward, or is that a decision that is, how, how have you and the board come to that decision? Because that's got to be a big decision.
It was. But we listened to the rhetoric that we hear, and we listened to what people told us from the community. And of course, we listened to what, watched what happened in 2014. And we said, okay. And we know from the International Animal Activist Agenda that ending breeding is, after ending wild capture, ending breeding is their next goal in a progressive set of goals to get animals out of zoos and aquariums. So we ask ourselves a key question. We said, could we operate and do effective research and utilize those animals for continued effective public engagement if it was a single-sex group? So the two kinds of single-sex groups that you are likely to have are either some younger animals who might benefit from living, you know, a group of young female belugas who might live from, benefit from not having an aggressive male living with them, or older animals who maybe shouldn't reproduce. And as I say, the only way you're going to keep them from reproducing is to, is separate them. So we talked to animal behavior, other beluga biologists, and, and it was pretty clear to us that while it might not be, in my view, the absolute most natural living situation, it was workable, certainly for the animals, and it was workable for the institution in terms of conducting research and continuing to use those animals for public engagement.
Thank you.
I'll pass and come back to me if you can. Do you have someone else in the queue?
You're back. Passed, and we're back to you.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
See no more questions?
Oh, actually, I do have one. Though I was contemplating. In 2001, when you determined to phase out the one remaining orca, and I know at that time, there was a lot of discussion, as there is today, well, if the aquarium doesn't have belugas, it will not, the aquarium will cease. And I get a lot of letters, like, don't shut down the aquarium, which is not really what this conversation is about. This is about what is the aquarium going to be? And I know that there was probably similar dialogue and conversation at that time. Well, you know, the aquarium will shut down, nobody will go if you don't have orcas anymore. What happened to attendance after that?
It dropped appreciably in 2001. We quickly redeveloped that exhibit, and we were in the fortunate position of being able to do so financially. And we quickly redeveloped that exhibit, and that decrease didn't last very long. And I'd have to go get the exact numbers, but I think by 2003, we were back at, at levels. Of course, you remember what happened in September 2001, you know, the whole 9/11 thing. And so just like the weather issue now, it was a complicated picture to unravel.
So it did, it did rebound, and the aquarium was able to build on its experience and find other ways to engage people.
Right.
Do you not think that the aquarium has the same opportunity to do that here if you were not to have--
I think the aquarium will survive. The aquarium will survive no matter what. It'll do what it has to. But will it be diminished as a facility that utilizes the real thing for people to see as opposed to just showing them videos? Will it be diminished in terms of the research it can accomplish? Absolutely. I mean, you are the host to one of the world's leading aquariums, and you can diminish that. You can choose to purposely diminish that, but that's what you'll be doing. You will take it out of the leadership ranks of aquariums without that, without that specific commitment to research and the public engagement. Basically. So it's not going to be fatal, but it will, it will diminish something that, that is one of the leading institutions in the world, which is among all things in Vancouver, is not that common.
Thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Last call for questions. See none. Before we hear from registered speakers, we will take a short recess and reconvene in five minutes. Thank you very much.